What's this?
Good, John.
I don't know what was on the table.
You on?
I am.
Thank you, Miles. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're on live to the recording. We're starting the Bath Planning Commission on September the 12th, six o'clock. I think it's actually 6:01. We're going to have approval of the agenda. Is there any commissioners that would like to approve the agenda?
No move.
Thank you, Ray. Ray Severy was the originator of the motion and Ray Cockey seconded the motion. Can we have a consensus vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Any disclosures of conflict of interest? I hear none. General public comments. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make a general public comment? It doesn't have to be about an item on the agenda.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good evening. You might say your name?
My name is Joan Matson and I live at 15344 Club Course Drive.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry that we missed several meetings because you guys have been very busy. On today's agenda is the discussion of the sidewalk ordinance draft. And I just had three questions and I knew that I wouldn't have an opportunity to have input during your discussion, so I wanted to put them out there now. So, and these are just my ignorance, really. It's not any big thing about the, what do we call this? The discussion. So, on the very first page where it's the Article 2, I had a question about where it says street means a dedicated. So, it's the definition of street. And it was a right-of-way, which is a state, county, or municipal roadway. And that's fine. I had no problem with that. But then later on, I started reading the plan for trails. And I thought, well, is trails not included in the definition of street? Because the document about trails says streets and trails, as if they were a group. And so, I just, my question is, should there be a statement here that says trails is discussed elsewhere or in Section XX?
Where do you see trails? Do you know?
I don't see trails here.
That's what she said.
That was my question. But when we got to, let's see. Where do I see trails? Trails comes up in the Section 5837.
In the green text?
It's in the same document, I think.
It's in the same document. Was it in that green text or are you in black and white?
It's black and white. It's under construction standards.
Yeah, there's two color texts under construction. There's green text and there's black text.
It's black.
Okay. So, it's not a change of meaning. We need to strike that.
Uh huh.
Construction standards.
Yeah, so we've actually, John, you want me to address this now or do we want to talk about it later?
I think you should talk about it when you discuss the whole thing. I just wanted to draw the attention to the fact that I was confused.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll mark it. We'll talk about it when we talk about the ordinance. Thank you. You got another one?
Yeah. Okay. So, then on the next page, under Section 58-34, this is semantics that I didn't understand what you meant. And that was the first sentence. The planning commission or board of trustees may require sidewalks to be installed for all new commercial development. I thought that it was funny to use "may," which usually means "may" or "may not," and then use "all" instead of "a commercial development." So, was it your intention that some future rules that covered "all" may be written? Or is it that it should be installed for a new commercial development? It's just me trying to understand what you mean.
I understand.
And then finally, there is in that same section, under C, sidewalk designated as pedestrian use shall be a minimum of five feet in width. It's clear. Sidewalk designated as non-motorized transportation pathway shall be a minimum of 10 feet wide. And that's clear. I have no question about that. My question is, in your design of these, what do we call these? Non-motorized transportation pathway. I didn't get a clear picture in reading all this material and having not been at meetings, I didn't hear your prior discussion. Are any of those going to be in residential areas, like on the way to schools? Because schools are one of your concerns. And if so, I can tell you as a pedestrian, I do a lot of walking and you all know I walk in the street. And my mantra is to always walk with traffic coming towards me. I don't walk at MSU where there is the non-motorized transportation. I am terrified of bicycles in my pathway. I don't know which way they're going and I don't know when they're going to whiz by me if they're behind me. I don't even know they're behind me. Sometimes they come so fast. So, my concern is, is there a rule of the road about shared pathway? Do pedestrians, should they stay next to the buildings if it's in a commercial place? And the bicyclists, you know, I'll use this five feet and bicyclists use that five feet. Are there any guidelines for sharing? That's all my question.
Depends on municipality. There are some shared path rules.
Yeah. Well, that's just a citizen's concern about sharing my walking space in a commercial place where I may park down the street and walk a whole block and a half to the store I'm going to and there may be bicyclists there. Or if I was going into the school to volunteer and high school let out, there were a lot of bicycle traffic. I want to know how to be safe because I'm not very fast. I'm very slow. So, that was my comment. And then with the snow removal, which is in blue, on the same packet, under Section 5858-35, removal, oh, maintenance and repair sidewalks, but under the snow removal section. I don't know if we have any streets that have parking on the street besides when you go in the older part of town towards the school, the old school, and for the farmer's market, there's street-side parking. So, is there anything in this regulation that says you can't dump your residential snow into the parking lane? If there is such a thing? Having lived in Chicago, I know that you can't put your snow where the parking is because there's so, there's so little of it. Now, there may not be a lot in the city of Bath, but I don't know the city well enough to address that. And then finally, on the next page, under 58-37, yeah, on the construction and maintenance of sidewalks. I wondered for homeowners who might have, be in a new development and have a sidewalk and have to maintain it, will the city provide, and maybe this is more for the city planner, a brochure of contractors that are reputable? Because as a homeowner, I know whenever something like this comes up, I start calling all my neighbors. I call anybody I know who might guide me. And there is so many penalties if you use the wrong this or that or the other thing. And it all falls on the homeowner if it's done wrong. So, I just want that addressed at the city planning level. A brochure of how do you do this if you are caught with a sidewalk that needs replacement or management?
That's a good idea.
And, yeah. And then there were two parts to this subsection 32 to 39 sidewalk construction standards that the C and D place the decision-making in the township superintendent. And I wondered if that was in consultation with the city planner or how does that work?
All that in green text there, just for the record, is example provided by the township engineer. That's for the planning commission.
This turns out to be black after the green is gone.
So, everything that's in black is what's there now, so that we haven't decided on any of that. We got to talk about that tonight.
Okay. I just thought that usually there's more than one body making big decisions like that.
Sure, yeah. We haven't looked into any of that language yet. That's something that the township engineer is something with, with those standards. They didn't have clear recommendations yet. So, I, we just, I just wanted everyone to know, we haven't gotten to that part yet.
Okay.
We're trying to be as transparent with this as possible. We've been actively bringing different iterations to this meeting so the public's aware as the conversation moves forward.
Yeah.
Imagine she printed the.
Those are my comments and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks for the comments.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone. I'm Matt from Dimaxine Development. Just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself to the new commissioner that we have and just remind everyone that if you have any questions or issues that you take with the site plan in relationship to 101578 Webster Road, we're still happy to meet privately to discuss that. Currently, we still are not able to release the name of the tenant or user, but we have a lot of information we'd love to share with anybody who's interested in hearing about it and we'd love any criticism or feedback that you provide in a more private setting. So, that's it.
So, is there a site plan that we could look at sometime?
We just got the full site plan today. We're sitting out the full agency review tomorrow. But if anyone's interested in seeing that site plan, it, as of this morning, has become a part of the public record.
Okay.
Yep. We just received it. Tried to get it as fast as we could, so there was enough time. And October 10th is the date that we'll be speaking about it.
Yep.
Yep. So, we still have some time, but we wanted to get that done as fast as possible so that any questions that you might have will be available to be asked as soon as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments, questions? Okay, let's move on to the minutes. Has everybody read the minutes?
Yep. I have no comments. My move to be approved is submitted.
Mr. Severy have moved to approve the minutes and Mr. Cockey seconded the motion. Can I have a consensus vote? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Communications?
Yeah. All right, so I got two communications, if it's okay if I abbreviate to you guys. So, the first one is an article included in the packet from the Michigan Township Association. If you gentlemen took a look at it, it breaks down, just a short synopsis of how there are some actors in the state government looking to supersede local zoning control of some of these green energy land uses, particularly larger commercial ones. So, we've had a recent situation where the state did something similar with landfills and this body was in favor of sending a letter to our state reps letting them know our displeasure with that.
They also tried this with gravel, aggregates, yep.
So, if this body felt the same way about these land uses, staff could draft up a letter or this body's review and then we could send it to the state reps if you gentlemen are interested in that.
Yeah, I think we should try and retain as much local control as is reasonable.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree too. Do you want to make a motion then to?
Yeah, I would like a motion then to that effect.
I'd like to make a motion then that we, as the planning commission of Bath Township, draft a letter to that effect. Miles, you pretty much know the verbiage that we should.
I'll second that.
Okay, it was moved by Mr. Cockey and seconded by Mr. Baker. Can I have a consensus vote? Those in favor say aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Do you want, Miles, to just send that or do you want it to come back and have review from us?
Oh, I don't think it's necessary for us to review it.
I mean, I'll definitely.
If you could just email us a copy.
Yeah, I'll email you a copy at the very least.
All right, great. Thank you.
Okay. And then the second communication. So, as everyone knows, Williams &amp; Works has been helping us with our non-motorized plan. They were coming up to the period in time, and it's just been really useful, I'll say, to have them kind of help us know what dates are coming up of when we need to get stuff done. That's statutory required, so this grant will meet all its requirements to, or so this report will meet all its requirements to seek grant funding. So, we need to do some visioning workshops as a part of the public input requirement for this type of plan. They have a couple of dates in mind that they wanted to throw by the planning commission to see what you guys think about this. So, if you have any calendars or anything, you want to get up real quick and you guys can email me this or we can come up with a decision now, however you want to do it. But they were thinking either Wednesday, October 25th, or Thursday, October 26th. They were thinking either 5:00 to 7:00 or 5:30 to 7:30 or 6:00 to 8:00. But basically sometime in the evening for about two hours, sometime afterward where people, the general public would be able to make it out.
So, 25th to 26th, if it's?
Yeah, 25th or 26th of October. Do either of those dates look good?
26th is better for me, Thursday.
Okay.
Anytime.
I probably won't be here. He's one of those two days.
Oh, okay.
I don't care.
You're available, John. You're good.
Yeah, I'm good.
Wednesday's better for you, George?
Thursday.
Are Thursday better for you?
26th.
Okay. And then, and we don't need every member of the planning commission there either. I mean, if we have three, we'll be good. So, it sounds like that Thursday though is okay.
26th.
And do we have a preference on the time? Do we want to go right at 5:00? Do we want to go a little bit after work?
What's easier for you as planner?
I don't care at all.
I'd go right to it then. 5:00?
5:00, 5:00 to 7:00. Okay. And it's going to be interactive, so it's built for people to come and go. So, if somebody shows up at 6:30, they'll get just as much input as somebody that showed up at 5:00.
How do they intend on promoting this?
We've talked about that several, the normal means, so we probably will, you know, do the Facebook one for that, Friday Report, newspaper, post everywhere, website, you know.
And what is the name of this, official name of the meeting?
It's called a visioning workshop. Helps get public input for the general, once the non-motorized plan's a little bit farther along.
This is where they have their draft plans mounted on the walls, talking about.
Draft plans mounted on the wall.
Walk around, look at them and sometimes, sometimes they have stickers to say, this is what I prefer.
Yeah, big map on the table. We'll get to mark it up. Okay. All right, so that's that.
Okay. Do you have any other communication?
That's it this time. Thank you.
There's two things that I did overlook, Miles, and now that Commissioner is here. Do you want to take the role? Because Alexis needs to have a record of who's here and who's answered.
Typically, for the planning commission, we never have done that, but you want to do that? Usually, we just mark present and add.
Okay, as long as you're aware of it, because it should be in the minutes.
Yeah, it'll be in the minutes.
All right, and let's, let's take time to have Alexis introduce herself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. My name is Alexis or you can call me Lexi, either or. I'm the new planning intern here, so I'll be around and be waiting for Miles. I'm in the Michigan National Guard, so that's where I spend most of my time, is in the Army in the mornings. And then I come here during the day to help all of you. And then I'm a student at Michigan State. I study comparative cultures and politics. And I'm working on getting a degree in urban planning. So, that's pretty much me.
Thank you.
What are you doing? You're spiritual.
Read. I love to read.
Good for you.
It's nice to meet all of you. Thank you.
Yeah, we're very excited to have her. We think she's a real professional and definitely going to add to this department's capacity.
Let's tell them the next day.
Yeah, why don't you take a couple of minutes, introduce yourself?
Good evening. My name is Mark Kramer.
Right.
I moved to Bath Township in '20. I retired from being a college administrator. My last school was George Mason University in Fairfax, Virginia. Had worked there for 13 years, but my career has been 50 years in higher education. My background is food service, so running dining operations on campus, restaurants, retail operations. I love to build kitchens and dining rooms and bring on new fast food restaurants. But card systems on campus, security was part of my responsibility, as well as bookstores. Anything that was money-related on a college campus, I had that as a responsibility. So, but I've bounced around the Midwest career-wise. My wife is a graduate and retiree from Michigan State University out of their dining housing area. We met 20 years ago, decided to get married, but she told me when she retired and I retired, we were coming back here to live. And she, that happened. Again, I'm pleased to have been put on this commission, so.
Thank you. Welcome.
Again, background, I was a city councilman. Alderman is what they call them in Wisconsin. And one of my duties from that was to sit on the planning commission. So, I had police and fire.
Oh, great. Well, nice to have you on. We appreciate it. Forward to this. Okay, I think we're ready to move on, Miles. Let's do old business, the sidewalk ordinance. We've hashed this over quite a few times.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure. And I apologize, you know, I guess, for bringing it back again. As I stated during the public comment, it's always my aim to be as transparent as possible. We got this from the board of trustees and wanted to move quickly with it. So, that's why we've been bringing these drafts early on. This draft is a little bit more built out than some that we've seen in the past. We did get some input from the township engineer, but unlike you'll see in the next ordinance with the private drives, they didn't give us like a full set of construction standards. They gave us an example of another municipality. They said we could rip and replace that with ours if we wanted to. I wanted to bring that to you gentlemen, get your feedback. We got some feedback from the public tonight about, you know, the role that the superintendent took in that ordinance and in our prior ordinance. And so, I think that feedback's fair and that's something that, you know, this body should evaluate. That's something that me and the township engineer will talk about. Another point that was brought up was trails. So, after talking with the township engineer and this body a couple of times, it is our intention to keep this ordinance as sidewalk-centric as possible. If we ever want to dip our feet into the water of trails and non-motorized pathways, it really should be its own standalone pathway ordinance in the township engineer's opinion because there's just so much you can dive into with that. It's a whole another beast. And so, we do still define pathways here because we almost feel like we have to because they exist in the township. And there is a difference statutorily and construction standards-wise between a sidewalk, which is typically five feet, and a pathway, which is typically 10. The main pathway people think of when they think of a pathway in Bath Township is the one that runs along Saginaw Highway that was installed by MDOT as part of that highway reconfiguration. And that's a true pathway built to the state's pathway standards.
MDOT standards.
MDOT's pathway standards. And our, what we're closing here would also line up with that, keeping it at a 10-foot width because basically they went with the concrete option of basically two segments of sidewalk blocks right next to each other. And those are usually five by five blocks.
Yep.
So, I'll just go high level here through a couple of things and then give me a little bit, well, all, not a little bit, but all of the feedback we got. Kept up administration enforcement and authority of the township board consolidated three sections into one. I guess that leads me into, you know, with the snow removal point that was brought up, it's always this fine line when you're writing ordinances to try to thread the needle between brevity and explain everything in great detail because the problem is you can go, and I, I think sometimes I might get too much in the realm of explaining things in great detail. The original snow ordinance that I brought for sidewalks, I think it was like three pages and then we pared it back to what it is now. Because if you go too long with these ordinances, then no one can understand it and/or is going to read it. So, we try to say, I think that the point that was brought up is a good one because there's only a few areas that that situation could occur in Bath Township. It's like the old saying, you got to plan for the 80% because you can't plan for the 20%. So, that, it's what we're always attempting to do.
Actually, on that point before we leave, there is a section, in Section B in snow removal, it says, "No person shall place snow or ice upon a street right-of-way" "so as to impair vehicle or pedestrian, motorized, non-motorized traffic." So, I think we're covered there.
It does kind of cover that there, yeah.
Yeah, it does.
So, that's good to know. Okay, so installation of sidewalks, so what was the comment there? May versus shall. I, I like the may instead of shall because it reserves this body's authority to implement that. There could be, I guess our preference and what I've gathered from this body, the planning commission's preference is for sidewalks as new commercial developments come in. So, that's, I guess, maybe subconsciously where that word "all" comes from. I think dramatically, "a" commercial would be better. So, I'll probably, if everyone's cool with it, change "all" to "a." But I like keeping the "may" there because if there is some kind of situation where it just doesn't make any sense at all, you guys know things come up, it's hard to plan for everything. So, I like to reserve this body's authority to have some oversight over these things.
I think "a" is a good way to go. The question I had before, and this is, new commercial development does include subdivisions. Is that correct?
It does. Because subdivisions are commercial residential.
And the question I had was on there that the easement shall be established on both sides of the road. It just, at the sidewalks could be put on both sides. It's just asking for the easement board.
Yeah. So, we're, so how I envision this going down, and everyone let me know if I'm off base here, is 80% of the time, the PUDs, which is a plan unit development, would come in. They would say, I'd like to build this plan unit development. This body's going to say, okay, we need to see sidewalks. They'll say, well, it doesn't really make sense here. And maybe this body agrees in that section, they don't need sidewalks. And that in lieu of those sidewalks going in, we are now asking them to establish easements on both sides because we don't know what's going to happen 50 years from now. We might need that easement as we, right now, are grabbing easements for everybody.
Now, is that an easement? Was it in a road, road right-of-way? Outside, that's outside the road.
It's out. If, if the road right-of-way is sufficient for sidewalks and no easement required, but the road way, if the right-of-way is insufficient for sidewalk, easement required.
Correct, yep.
So, there's a little bit of subjectivity to it, but it's something we can look at at that time. Because right now, I don't know how many people are aware about Webster Road Project, 2024 project. We've had to work with 20-plus landowners on gathering easements just so we can have enough space to do the sidewalk. Some of these easements that we have to get are easements for two, a four-square-foot area. We've got to go through the whole state process for four square feet. Okay, so moving on, we have the repair standards. Got some pictures in there. Move that around. Snow removal standards, very common, very in line with everybody around us. Except for East Lansing, obviously, they go a little bit harder on that. But obviously, they got a lot more non-motorized pathways. Order to construct and repair, that's been built out quite a bit. Last time we talked about this, we had very specific information for if it was one property owner that had to repair it, but we didn't address if single property owners needed to repair a section together. So, we've now complicated the language to address single ownership versus multiple ownership. So, look that over. And if you have any, any grammatical things or anything anybody seems, I know there's a lot of language here. There could, we're now above grammar errors. Mark it up. Send us a copy. We'll be rereading this several more times before the public hearing at next meeting. And then finally, I need opinions on the construction standards. Go back to the township engineer. For this ordinance, they didn't do what I thought they would do, which is just write it for us. Fingers crossed that I wanted to happen, but instead. Fingers crossed that I wanted to happen, but instead they just said, look at this, do this.
The Plainfield Charter Township is the one that gave us, right?
Yeah, they gave us this one. This is the example they provided. So they were saying, hey, we just helped this municipality write this. If you guys like it, work for them.
You're talking about Plainfield?
Yeah, Plainfield. And Brian Newhoff works with them as well, so that's why we sent this over.
So just to digress a little bit on the non-motorized trail construction standards you have there, section thirty-two forty, I would suggest we do not include that.
Yeah, I agree. And that's why I was worried is causing some of the confusion. That's why I was like, if it's in green text, just know that's like advisory language.
Yeah, well, all trails aren't HMA requirements, you know, and all that good stuff, so.
And you can see, these aren't too built out. I mean, it's only, and even these parts that were noticed to repair and construction and repair by township, that isn't necessarily construction standards. But I put that in there as well just because those are sections we've talked about. And I thought it was interesting how they worded it versus how we worded it. So if you got any feedback on that, let us know. Staff will also be reviewing that and seeing what we think before the public hearing. Other than that, I really didn't touch construction standards because I just see that as outside my wheelhouse. I'm not, I'm not a civil engineer. I defer to the engineer to help us with that part. He just wanted a little bit of feedback and direction with his body before he started writing. And then there are all the sections that we removed and reduced that I spoke about earlier. Little bit of correction in terms of roles and responsibilities and the ticketing portion. And then introduce the topic as well in the special use language of the zoning ordinance. Yes?
On fifty-eight, the violations and penalties, it says separate offense. Do we want to look at that?
Where are you, George?
I mean, violation and penalties on nine, page nine of ten.
Yep, got it.
At the very top, the B paragraph, last, last word is, last two words are separate offenses. So the violations, how does that work when you read that?
Where are we at? Which, A, B, C, D?
The last sentence in B.
It just seems.
Each day such a violation continues.
Yeah, so that means that like every day that goes on, the tickets are in.
Five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, five hundred dollars.
Yes, my question is, what would be considered a violation? Because I got a problem with this whole section. I've brought this up before. What would be a violation that they would actually issue a violation for? Because snow removal, we're not gonna do it because the township is just gonna plant a flower.
Anything in the article is how I wrote it.
Yeah. I guess I would like to see us, we'll get to this one, where it's not going through my comments. But I don't think we need this violation thing at all. I don't think we need the ticket section at all.
We need some type of recourse.
We do, we go out and do it and bill them and put down their taxes. We already say that for snow removal, why can't we do that for repairs of sidewalks?
I mean, we could do that for repair, we could do that. You can do whatever you feel is best here.
For individual places, that's what we would do. Now, for a wholesale area that you're gonna do it for, then the verbiage you've got in here where the township might issue a contract or stuff like that, I think that needs to stay. But for an individual person, you send them, let them say, that's gotta be fixed. And they get twenty days to do it or whatever the kind of, if they don't do it, the township comes in and does it.
Yeah. I mean, we could consolidate, I could get with Kevin, obviously, he's a code enforcement officer, Kevin Douglas, and say, what do you think about consolidating the violations and penalties with the repair section? And say like, if this, if you feel like, or to your point, the, so many days goes by, the township will step in and repair, do we need to also have this whole process for ticketing?
Yeah, I, I suggest we don't.
Because it's, I, I agree, it could be we're duplicating, we're setting two different processes. Let's just have one process.
Yeah, I think we should. Can we go through this one page at a time?
Yeah, I can start at the top.
When you get done, Miles?
Yeah, I'm done. So we'll go through.
Okay. Anybody got any comments on the definition section?
Of course. In the, let me get back to the.
Give us a section?
First, first one.
First section.
Definition is the first section.
The only comment I got here.
Fifty-eight thirty-one?
Yeah. The definition of adjacent sidewalk. We're trying to decide what adjacent means for sidewalk. But in the definition, we say adjacent property. So we get, use adjacent as part of the definition, which we should not do. I don't think.
That's fine. Well, see what we can do there?
Yep. And then we have in here, a little bit confused, under sidewalk means, we crossed out the section, the portion of the street right of way, and just say pathway, that doesn't make sense.
Oh, yeah, you know what, that was.
I don't know what happened there.
No, we need to fix that.
Yeah.
That was on the engineer's comments too.
Oh, well, okay. Because then, because it says sidewalk means pathway, and down below it says pathway means sidewalk, so.
I know. We talked about that last time, it's an engineer's comment, I didn't click correct comment.
Okay. That's all I got on definitions.
Okay. Yeah, because we're a circular language, we talked about that.
Yep.
Do we want to mandate that sidewalks have to be concrete? I guess my concern is.
Do you want to talk about that when we get down to construction standards?
Construction standards. Yeah, we can.
Okay. Okay, so what else we got, Ray?
Okay, fifty-eight thirty-three. When you read that, you've got B, C, and D. B, D and C repeat B.
Okay.
So we don't need C and D, they're already included in B. Or if you want to keep C and D separate, just delete D.
Yeah, I'm just trying to say, I'm all lined up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you, Ray, on that one.
Okay.
And I also wonder, do we really need the township engineer to be on site when we're doing sidewalk construction and repair?
No, we, somebody's gotta inspect that it was done correctly.
I totally agree with you.
Who do you want that person to be?
Well, I don't know, but it seems to me as though the township engineer is gonna be pretty expensive to.
They are, but again, we're gonna bill it to them. And now, in terms of saving the taxpayer money, I'm all about it. But who do you want that to be to ensure the job is done right?
Well, that's a good question. Are we creating a job for a township engineer, I guess, full time, or?
No, I mean, Brian Newhoff would have to send somebody out. I mean, it could be somebody from the Row Commission, but then we got, they're gonna bill us for their time as well.
That's true.
It could be me, but again, I'm not a structural civil engineer. I don't even know what I'm looking at.
Should we say a representative of the township engineer? Because it could be a site inspector that's not a township engineer.
Sure, some third body that they contract out? Yeah, township engineer or their representative?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Because then that makes it so the township engineer's gotta approve that person. Fifty-three B. Fifty-eight thirty-three B.
Got it. Yeah, typically, we've used the township engineer as a reference to the firm.
Correct.
Not to an individual person.
Yeah.
And so that they would dispatch somebody.
I'm fine with putting that.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with putting in their rep in case like they don't want it to be a Brian Newhoff employee. They hired like some third party contractor, that's a whole other thing now. But yeah, to your point, yeah, when we say township engineer, we're saying Brian Newhoff. Okay. What else we got?
Fifty-eight thirty-four. And it says that the, I want to see, sidewalks designate as pedestrian use. Do we bring that in there?
What else?
Sidewalk, it says sidewalks designate as pedestrian use. When we build a sidewalk that's not designated for pedestrian use? I think that's redundant. Sidewalk shall be minimum five feet width.
I get what you're saying. I don't think any of the, I think all of that adds clarity though. I mean, I'm willing to change whatever, but I just. It might be redundant, it might be common sense, but you'd be surprised, you know what I mean?
Yeah, makes it very clear, I think.
It does. And then in section thirty-eight thirty-five.
Ray, I got one comment on C. It says within one year of commencement of construction in, there are cases where we commence construction, but it probably is not practical to construct a sidewalk until the primary construction is done because of the earth moving equipment and stuff that's gonna be involved. I know some projects take much more than one year to complete.
What do you think, John, in terms of the number?
Well, I think it should say prior to occupancy permit.
Prior to occupancy, that's, that's fine.
And on that, Ray, on that C, where it says sidewalks designated as pedestrian use, below that, it says sidewalks required to be constructed, or, excuse me, non-motorized transportation.
It's ten feet.
So that's a deline, the differentiation. Ones for pedestrian use, ones for designated as non-motorized transportation pathways. One's five feet, one's ten feet, that's why.
Yeah, it's all good. And then prior to C of O, John, that makes sense.
Yep, yep.
What else we got?
I had to read that twice.
Fifty-eight thirty-five.
Good job.
That one, I suggest we change the title of that one.
Okay.
To include maintenance, repair and maintenance of sidewalks. Maintenance includes snow removal.
Sure. I mean, problem with that?
Yeah, and then the, what's the P thirty-five? Oh, yeah. Why, why do we delete A? Where it says, all cases, it shall be the responsibility of the owner of every lot to, you know, maintain the sidewalk. We've got it covered in a different section back below, but I think, back below, I think it needs to be here at the beginning rather than back in the body of someplace else.
Put A in, I don't know. Put A. A in, no, it could have just been, put A in.
Yeah. And then B, oh, I know. B, we deleted B, but I didn't have a problem with that one. But then I think what we should do is just make snow removal B. Under the section, just make snow removal B. Yeah, you've got A, we deleted B, so there's no B.
Yeah.
And so just make snow removal B, then just take.
Yeah, that's formatting, but you're.
Changes A, B, C to one, two, three, or whatever.
I don't think we formatted that initially because we just wanted to see if you guys even liked it before we formatted it. And then, yeah, this A, B, C will become the one, two, three.
One, two, three, yeah.
Okay. B.
And that'll be formatted like the other ordinance.
Yeah, and this is, this is already getting formatted like everything else. I went through and checked that before I put it in the package.
And then in fifty-eight thirty-six, oops. B, we just delete that because we added it back in A as the other section. This is where it says the duty of adjacent property owners to maintain the sidewalk.
Where is that at?
Fifty-eight thirty-six, B.
Thirty-six B, okay, delete that.
Just delete that.
C becomes B.
Yep.
Okay. And so on.
Yeah, right. And then, let's see.
And then, just so we're going page by page, me and the township engineer will clean up the next section. We'll work together, if there's any feedback you got.
On the standards?
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is, under D, this is where I just said, use C from the snow removal one. I mean.
Where, which one, which D?
Which section?
Fifty-eight thirty-six.
Procedure for maintaining.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, oh.
Is just put the verbiage we've got for snow removal here.
Okay. Do you like the snow removal?
Well, yeah, because that's where it says that you've got so much time to do it and stuff like that. And if you don't do it, the township's gonna do it and it's gonna go on your back.
Use snow removal language.
So I get a choice.
Where is that at? I'm sorry?
That is fifty-eight thirty-six.
D?
D.
Top of page, five of ten.
Gotcha.
Yep. I think construction standards from that township, I think it was who.
Yeah, well, the green ones aren't us, the black language is us.
On that black language, though, while you're right there on five, five of ten, right underneath where he was on D of the engineer, this is satisfactory of the township. The township superintendent proved sidewalks outside the public street right of way. A record of easement informed satisfactory to township. Who is the township?
Township what?
Well, yeah, we'll clean that up. I agree with the whole comment about the superintendent. I agree with the whole town comment about who determines. That's always the issue.
Yep.
Yeah, in my mind, it should be somebody that has some expertise in sidewalks. If anything, I'm leaning more towards the township engineer.
Yeah, I would agree.
Well, in regards to the cost, it's not like they have to do it on a weekly basis, you know? It's gonna be one time, and then maybe ten years from then, it's gonna be.
That's point. I guess for something like that, they're just approving the easement, right? Why can't you just say the township?
Yeah, you could just say the township and keep it broad. I mean, it's always.
Because it might be, it might be the attorney that's gonna review that.
Yeah, it would be, yeah. We can say the township.
Representative or something?
No, just say the township.
You say the township, it keeps it broad, but I think, sometimes it's good to define rules, sometimes it's good to keep things broad.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll clean those up. And then violations and penalties, Ray, I'll, I'll talk to Kevin.
Yeah, see that, I think we just get rid of that.
I'll talk to him. Yeah, I, we might want to throw, not throw the baby out with the bath bar, but we can at least take some of it and put it in with the repair procedures.
Yep.
Okay, and that's, we looking good from there?
Yeah, in this section, yeah.
Okay.
Miles, in the seventh line down of D in fifty-eight thirty-six, it says in accordance, the work and assess the cost in accordance with the assessment district. What are we referring to?
Yeah, so the assessment district is on. It's one of those things, again, where like, we thought about typing out like a page to explain all this, but the assessment district will be determined by the township board of trustees. Let's say like a large section of sidewalk needs to be repaired.
Yep.
Or even if it's a small section. If it's a small section, it'll be, just be clear that the assessment district will be the property that it lies on. But let's say it's across like seven properties front. The township board of trustees will get to determine what district is responsible. It could just be the seven properties, could be the whole street if that's how they determine the district. So we're leaving it a little bit open to the board of trustees to determine that district.
And that would only happen, I think, if, if the township's actually gonna do the construction, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. See, the way Marion Township handles this is, they have a contract every year for sidewalk repair. And their assessment, they assess only the property owners that have repairs in front of their house.
Yeah.
So an engineer goes out and marks all the sidewalks ahead of time, those repairs gotta be done. Then they have a hearing, and then the property owners have the option of do their work themselves, per township standards. Or if they don't do it, the township will do, put out a contract, and it'll get billed to the, on their taxes. And they've got, they don't, depending on the size or the amount, they can have up to five years to pay for it.
And that's what we were gonna go with, that same motto of spreading it over five years. That way, somebody doesn't get like a five hundred dollar bill and their taxes all over here. They'll have a thousand dollar bill over five years.
Yep.
And really, it's almost like an any kind loan from the township.
It is.
Because we're not charging interest or inflation on any of this work.
Yep.
So it's a, you know, it's, everyone hates paying for things, but we felt like this was the most fair way to do it. Okay. I think, I don't know if we've done here, but I appreciate all that feedback. I know this has been a work in progress. It's one of those ordinances that's contentious, so we're trying to be careful with how we word things and how we go about this.
I got a comment about, it's on, item three, I don't know what standard it's under. It's on the page that starts with be cut in full depth.
Page one of. Seven of ten?
Seven of ten. It's, it's item three, placement, sidewalk shall be placed one foot from the street right of, right of way.
Okay.
That seems like it's, A, why are we requiring it, B, one foot minimum, I guess.
Be cut with full depths. Where's the one foot thing?
It's on three, Ray.
Oh, three.
Two, three, four, it's three.
Placement?
Placement.
Yeah. That's normally where sidewalks are placed.
Well, that sure doesn't give you much room for the snow from the road to be plowed without putting it on the sidewalk.
No, you're gonna put it on the, well, oh, from the road, you mean?
Yeah. I mean, I think sidewalks should be about four feet from the road at least.
Oh, no, you get it backwards. The road right of way, you've got, you have a sixty-six foot right of way. The street's thirty-six foot wide, maybe.
Okay.
So you've got, well, where I live, there's fourteen feet from the back of curb to the property line. So if there's a sidewalk there, the sidewalk be one foot from the property line, but five feet wide.
The other side, property line, the car property line.
Well, there's only, there's only two property lines.
You will have like five or six feet between the curb bags.
Or more.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Okay, I.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I read this wrong, then, my mistake.
No, it's all good. So are we feeling good about sidewalks? Or at least in the direction we're heading?
Yeah, I think so.
Yep.
All right, private roads, if you're ready, John, whenever you want me to.
I'm ready, if anybody else, everybody else ready?
Yep.
I hear any objections? Okay, let's move to private roads, Miles.
Okay. So private roads, we, we focused a little bit more on this ordinance the last couple of weeks, so it got built out a little bit more than sidewalks did. We're ju- we're juggling ordinances right now, so, you know, um. We went ahead and I'll just go through where, what's new, basically. So we talked last time that this was in front of you gentlemen about creating tiers for private roads. We felt like that was the best, we knew that we wanted to cap how many people could be served by a private road. We were thinking around twelve households. So then we were like, okay, well, what do we wanna do tier-wise? And me and the township engineer talked about this as well. So we're thinking private drives, right now, a driveway serves one household. We thought, you, now, there are places, particularly with condominiums, because local zoning can be superseded at times by the con- state condominium act, where they're permitted to have shared driveways. So it's already kinda happening in the township. We thought, well, maybe this is a good way to open it up for all housing types. Shared driveways would be two households, and that would be the lowest standard. So it'd just be regular driveway standards, you still have to get a permit from the road commission, they will review it. And so that, it makes it real easy for us. The driveway serves two people, same standards as a driveway now. Now, then we'd have private roads, and private roads are divided into two categories. Small private road, which will serve three to six households, and large private road, which will serve seven to twelve households. And along with those different tiers comes different requirements and, like, with driveways, just regular driveway requirements, which means you need a permit from the road commission. Once you go to small roads, that road can be dirt, it can be asphalt, it can be concrete, and it requires a light maintenance agreement and a light service access agreement. All of that should be recorded with the register of deeds. You go to a large private road, now that road needs to be concrete or asphalt, um, and it has to have all the agreements.
What if there's more than twelve houses?
You need to be on public road.
Yeah.
You're done.
I just wanna know what that differentiation is.
Yeah, that's a fair question. Um, so we break down what that process would look like to evaluate a private road. It would have to come through the planning commission, it would have to come through the board of trustees to get the private road permit. Um, again, driveways don't need to do that, driveways just go through the normal process they go through now. Uh, so that process is spelled out here, uh, early on in the ordinance. Then there are development standards, those are spelled out here, so private drive development standards. And we consolidate where all information about, because right now in our ordinance, we have different standards for driveways. They're sprinkled all throughout the ordinance, we're consolidating them all right here in one paragraph. And then small roads, again, we have standards. I have a highlighted standard here to determine, we looked at what municipalities around us do. So for a small road, we're thinking a thousand feet in terms of limiting the depth of the road.
Oh.
And two thousand feet for larger roads. Well, this is the criteria from the county we still kept in. This is what the county standards are for, and they call them, um, what are they? This is their multi-share, uh, MDRs, multi-residential drives. So then we move on to required access and maintenance agreements. This section's with legal right now, they're drafting up void or quiet agreements that anyone that would wanna engage in one of these private roads would have to, uh, register one of these with the township as they move through this process, and it shall be reported with the register of deeds and with the land. That way, twenty years on, when somebody's calling us, because they will, and my neighbors don't wanna pay for grading this year, and I'm pissed, and they always did it, what now? We're gonna say, go look at your deed, it will explain.
And what does it say?
Uh, construction standards. So the township engineer did help us write out a lot of, all this blue, and here is from the township engineer. They made a nice little table here that break out the three categories I talked about. I highlighted, you know, the limits of those categories here. And you'll see that stormwater control, I put it's under review with the Plank County Drain Commission. One thing that's been challenging, I'll say, about writing this ordinance is we are attempting to open Pandora's box here a little bit.
We sure are.
Um, and roads are something that affects everyone. With every agency, just like with development, is involved in the road review process. So if I'm gonna do an ordinance, I wanna do it right, and so I'm trying to get feedback from the applicable agencies as we're writing this. 'Cause I don't know about surf, surface water drainage, I mean, I know enough to be dangerous, but I need to consult John Morrison and see how he feels.
Yes.
So that's what we're doing, and that's why some of these parts aren't getting in immediately, because we're relying on other agencies' timelines, and I can't control that.
Right.
Um, so that's all that language. Uh, and then I also put a note here that this ditching, maintenance, erosion, control, and vegetation standards, I'm working with John to combine this into the construction standards.
Oh.
A lot of this could be consolidated down into that table.
These, for those things though, those could be on public roads too, right?
Yeah.
These standards for ditching and stuff?
Yeah, most of these already are on public road standards, yeah. And that's why, again, we're trying to thread a needle between, um, creating too much of a standard, too much of a high barrier to entry, 'cause that's the whole point of the ordinance, is allowing lower barriers to entry for developers and landowners. So we don't wanna go overboard with our ditching and erosion controls, at that point, it might as well just go to public road. But at the same time, we don't wanna have landowners twenty years on being like, if there's water everywhere, what do I do? How could you ever allow this?
Right.
Right.
So that, that's where we're at, basically.
So how does everybody wanna do this? You wanna go through this page at a time? You wanna mark it up, give it to Miles and Alexa? You wanna talk about it right now, page at a time? What's your preference, commissioners?
I think we can mark it up, it's pretty solid right now.
Looks like we did the other year.
Yeah, it's very good right now.
That consensus?
Yep.
Any objections?
Conceptual question?
Yes.
Was this, this came to us because of a particular property, right?
Yeah.
But was this a formal request as a text?
It's a formal request, it's a text amendment request.
So we don't have to take this on, but we do have to, to run it through a process?
We do have to run it through a process.
Right.
This body can, uh, give a whole week vote of a down vote recommendation to the board.
Okay.
Or a whole vote to the board, and then the board votes it down, like, with the wind energy.
But it goes to the board, for sure.
It has to go to the board, that's right, Ryan, yes.
Thank you.
We can only make a recommendation.
Is that?
Go ahead, Ray.
Just as a point of argument, is, is that, uh, normal?
It is. Yeah, this is, uh, text amendment request is a citizen's right of any municipality in the state of Michigan.
I mean, as opposed to we making the decision as opposed to the township board making the decision?
Only, only with a text amendment request is that standard usually. I mean, it depends on, different municipalities are different, but usually at this municipality, if, uh, you guys bring like the wetland language, and we're not like, you know, we'd never make it to the board, 'cause you were the originator of the request, the planning commission was.
Correct.
Now, for like the sidewalk ordinance, that came to us from the board, so-
Right.
We gotta send something back to them.
Correct. Okay. Right, uh, George?
I got a question on the, um, you did say the same standards of the driveways now are the same standards that they have for one and two, uh, households? Okay, same standards, okay.
Same standards.
Save me from looking it up, which is right here.
Yeah.
Right.
So you want just scrutiny from us and markup and?
Yeah, mark it up, mark it up and send it back to us. And even if you get some high-level feedback of like, how we're breaking it down between drive, small, big, if you think the consolidating those two makes sense, if you think dividing down to three makes sense. I mean, we're looking from everything, from grammar feedback to like conceptual feedback.
Okay.
Well, I have a few questions.
Yeah.
So these private road standards are not gonna be, necessarily gonna be the same as they are in public road standards.
Sorry, no.
Okay. 'Cause in public roads, we get maximum length of cul-de-sacs and stuff like that, which is different than what we're proposing here.
Yeah, these are, uh, we don't want the lengths of these to be as long.
These are gonna be longer.
Are these longer?
Oh.
So that's something to think about.
Cul-de-sac is six hundred feet, period.
Yeah, so that's something to think about. So for like the multi-share drives with the county, for, uh, a certain number of households, they limited to six hundred and sixty-six. And then I saw their maximum, uh, language was nine hundred and ninety. So we went with a thousand and two thousand, 'cause that's what we saw common in other municipalities. But I highlighted those because that's an area where-
Right.
Yep.
There needs to be input.
Yeah, Miles needs some input, Ray, on that.
Yeah, sometimes those lengths, I already remember the fire department too.
Yeah.
They have, they have, they have people on that.
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, I mean-
It kinda says that.
Yeah, and we talked about, you know, uh, turnarounds for emergency vehicles, overhead height has to be kept up to a certain grade, or fire truck scottia will get there.
Right.
Doesn't matter what kind of road it is.
Says fourteen in there right now, right?
Yeah, fourteen foot clearance.
Oh, okay. In the county one, they get four residential parcels, so that's something we're not gonna necessarily go with.
Yeah, we're going a little bit, uh, beyond that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Question I had too is, uh, it says here, not extend more than, extend repeat, public rate, to the top of the approved turnaround. What does top of mean? It means a far end, but-
Yeah, more in, uh, you can put it that way, whichever you want.
Is that typical, I don't know if that's typical language or not.
I don't know, their, their language seemed a little lacking to me, but also, uh, they're threading that same needle between brevity and explaining it to T.
Yeah. Now, private drive, minimum of ten feet in length and maximum of twenty feet in length. That works great for two houses that are side by side, but if it's side by side like that, then it's gonna be, you're talking about a duplex, basically, almost.
Yeah, if the private drive sneaks off, it makes a Y, we count that as each Y as it's going with. We won't measure it from like one to one as it goes down to different depths.
But the question I've got is, is that, in, in the minimum standards that the engineer gave us, a private drive is fourteen feet wide plus four foot shoulders. So that doesn't fit for, for length. It's gonna be wider than can be long. And I see a private drive being, if you've got two houses adjoining properties that may or may not be on a public road, I suppose.
Yeah.
They just-
They may or may not be.
Yeah. But they're big, big, long properties, their drive, their private drive might be a hundred feet long.
Yeah.
Not ten feet long.
Yeah.
So I think that-
It's hard to, did we, did we put a limit on length for drives?
Yeah, ten and twenty feet.
Ray, could you just mark those up and give them to Miles, and then we'll bring this back?
Yeah, mark that up and send me a copy with that. That's something, the township engineer is just not thinking about that. They probably pulled these from like a call list.
Well, that could be, yeah. In, in general, I like the county standards, but let's keep anything else, just questions here.
Ray, what number was that?
The-
The ten?
Private, that is.
Wait, where's the page number?
Oh, it's four of nine.
Okay.
Private drive, four, it's, it's number four.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, minimum of five foot setback from any side yard, that doesn't make sense to me either.
For drives?
Yeah.
That's our current standard.
Yeah.
So now all driveways meet that in that township, but some of them, you know, were installed before, and that's the road commission standard too. So like, if you had a driveway that was like right on your property line, the road commission would ask you to move it five feet off of the property line.
Off the property line.
Not like from the front property line, but I guess from the side, or your adjacent house next to you.
And look at these private things, these things are primarily gonna be in a rural area.
Yep.
So, I don't know, that five foot setback, I think it's, there's something else in here too that says that if your property is on a public road, you can't have a private drive.
Hmm, we gotta address that.
Which makes sense to me, if you've got, if you've got a public road, unless it's Saginaw Street.
Yeah.
Or something like that.
We can't have a private drive, you got, if it's on a public road.
Why would you want a private drive? I mean, why would you need other than-
No, like a driveway.
A driveway, yes.
Yeah, and for private drivers or drivers, it's a private road, you couldn't have off of the public, you know.
Yeah.
No, that would be problematic.
Yeah, let's mark these up and we'll bring this back in another meeting or whatever's convenient.
And Ray, me and you could even sit down and just go through it page by page, I think that'd be helpful for me too.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, we've got a lot of other items on the agenda we need to address.
Okay.
Can we move on to Monticello's Market? That's the driveway to connect the, uh, hardware store to the Monticello's parking lot?
Yeah. I want me to just do a quick intro on how we got here and then- Um, so if everyone remembers correctly, so, uh, Ace Hardware, uh, developed by the Marin Group, had a number of conditions of their approval, one of which was when they went for the site plan amendment for the drive into Monticello's or Monticello's, uh, was to come back and do a site plan amendment for that on behalf of Monticello's. So, and the packets included an agreement from them to have the authority from that landowner to, uh, basically amend their site plan. They provided a sheet of the amendment. The main point of this amendment is to address just traffic flow through that, uh, parking lot, and make sure everything's being done in a safe manner. I did meet with, uh, Commissioner Baker, and we quickly went over, so, you know, just rudimentary traffic flow modeling to see if we were in cre- creating any kind of bad incentive structure here with, basically trying to see if, were we creating an incentive structure to cut through these parking lots to make a quicker commute or get around traffic lights, 'cause that's obviously what we don't want. What we do want is for these entities to have better commerce between each other.
Correct.
At that point, we feel like we've achieved that. We feel like even the design, if I can pull it up, of the parking lot helps with that, because instead of doing a straight shot through Monticello's, going right into Ace Hardware, you have to make a little bit of a snake effect here. And, uh, that, that helps incentivize people to slow down. But the developers here, if they wanna add anything I missed?
We had this plan originally when we got it approved, and my understanding was this is approved with conditions that we created, the pedestrian walk, which we show on the striping plan there, uh, and then the other condition was cross-access agreement, um, as well, which we had that recorded.
Yeah. One thing that I thought the planning commission might wanna discuss tonight, and it, not detailed on the plan, but if, uh, they wanna go into signage, you know, to- the crosswalks nice, the laddering lets people know like this is intended for pedestrian crossing, hopefully incentivize vehicles to slow down. I didn't know if you guys had the intention that's, you know, typical with like in front of Myers, in front of like a Menards, where they'll have like stop signs, is that something?
We didn't, but we can easily address that.
I don't know how the planning commission feels about that, but it's something to think about.
I think, I think, yeah. I like, if you can put a stop sign, it should be stop for pedestrians, something like that. You shouldn't have a stop every time you cross this crosswalk.
Right. Should be yield to pedestrians.
Yeah, yeah, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, something like that. So do you have an agreement with Monticello's that you're gonna maintain this stripage and?
Yeah, we have a, an access agreement to, you know, maintain the shared drive, um, and that was provided to, uh, Miles.
Okay.
So you, are you referring to future painting?
Yes.
So the future painting, would you be responsible for, or will Monticello's be responsible?
Well, Monticello's will handle their parking lot striping, yeah.
But this time you'll take care of that?
Yep, we are starting to-
And that's stressed in the agreement?
Yep, we've already actually constructed it, so.
And if, if Monticello's fails to maintain their striping, Monticello's has given Marin Group authority to do the site plan amendment. So if that, uh, if that infrastructure falls apart and isn't being repaired, Monticello's is on the hook, where me and Kevin, the ticket would go to Monticello's, they're no longer meeting their site plan.
Yes, that would be correct. And I wanna make sure that we're all clear with that.
So you wanna stop for pedestrians sign?
I think yield to pedestrians.
Yield, I think it would be sufficient. I think that would be sufficient.
You want just two of those, uh, two signs in the parking lot going both directions?
I would think that's reasonable. Was there consensus on that?
There's a lot of people walking across there.
Yeah.
Well, that's the only entrance, so, yeah, that's, that's where they're at.
Yeah.
Um, you know, in regards to the, the, the comments by the Bath Township engineer, where he says it may become a shortcut, I don't really see that because.
I don't either.
Because we, we did the modeling, it's not gonna be. We, we went, we drove a car essentially to try to figure out if we could make our time shorter and it's, it's long, it takes more time if you try to use it for a cut through.
So I don't think that's even gonna be a factor. And I, and I'm gonna ask a dumb question here, but is that, and this isn't really, concerning yours, but that there's a, appears to be a second entrance to Monticello's. Was that always there? I don't remember that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have two now. There are signs right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't know.
MDOT would never, MDOT would never approve this now, but that's how it's always been, so they've gone, they've gone to pass.
Some old planners, that's their fault.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, do we?
That was actually the guy, that's not a, not a MDOT road.
So they, they are seeking a vote tonight if the planning commission feels up to snutter.
Make a motion?
I'll move to approve the site plan amendment.
With the condition of the parking lot signage?
With the condition of the parking lot signage added to the crosswalk here.
Support. Okay, motion by Commissioner Baker and support by Commissioner Severly. Can I get a consensus vote?
Aye.
Those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Miles, let's move on then to new officers.
Okay.
Mr. Kramer resigned, so that moved me to the chairman of the planning commission. Now, the question becomes, this has only ever happened once that I know of in the last three decades, so do you want me to remain as the chairman or do you want to elect a new chairman? What's the commissioner's preference? Would you want to elect somebody to be the vice chairman?
If I may.
Yes, sir, Mr. Severly.
Well, I, I mean, Mr. Cocky, Severly's.
Cocky, thank you.
I just think we should go through, even if you are going to be the chairman, I think someone should nominate you to be chairman. You should accept and then we go from there. We have a, have a, how would you say, an ordinary election of officers.
I don't have any problem with that, but I will refrain from voting.
Oh, you don't have to. You're.
If you want to be commissioner, you can vote for yourself.
It's a pain.
That's okay. It's, it's not an extra spiff out. Is there consensus for Mr. Cocky's suggestion?
I gotta comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Baker.
Well, we usually have elections in January.
That's correct.
Do we need to have an election now to move you up?
We, we do need to have a election now.
Yes.
And then also in January.
We'll have one in January.
And in January also, yeah.
I, I move to keep John Reich on as, or to move John Reich up to chair for, till, till the next election.
Sure.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded by Mr. Baker, seconded by Mr. Sorry, this, Human Bliss. Is there a consensus vote or do you want to vote by roll call? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we need to decide what we're gonna do with the vice chairman then.
Yep.
Mr. Bliss.
So I shared this, this weekend with John, so I'm sharing it with all of you. Uh, it seems like we need to build a bench on this committee. We've had commissioners serve for so long, which has been so helpful because the institutional history is here. But we have a lot more new commissioners in the last couple of years. It would be helpful to move one of our newer commissioners into the vice chair role to help that person be prepared if they decide or we decide to move them into the chair person's role in the future. Uh, and so with that, I would nominate Ray Cocke to be the vice chair.
Support. Okay, then moved by Mr. Bliss and supported by Mr. Severly to nominate Ray Cocke as vice chair.
Are you willing to accept?
Are you willing to accept?
I was gonna say, is that coming?
Well, I figured knowing you, Ray, if you objected, you'd.
I'll accept.
You'd certainly object. Thank you. Uh, can I get a consensus vote? Those in favor of saying, define by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, no, I'm not opposed. I just got a comment, George. I was just reminded this week of, you know, as we serve in our committees that it is about the whole, you know, the whole body. I was talking to someone this week and I was reminded that it's not about our own personal things, so as we chair, whether it be the roads or here, that, you know, we try to keep an open relationship with those above us like our superintendent and supervisors and build a good rapport and, and try to keep a, a good communication between us and them and that we try to focus on the community, still community, still continue to focus on the Bath Township. And so I just wanted to reverberate that as it was brought to me. That's it.
I, I think it's really important that we have some people on the planning commission that share duties like the road committee, like the ZBA. I think feedback from those organizations is critical to our decision-making process.
And that's. Speaking of that, John, I got one thing whenever you're done.
No, I'm done. Go ahead.
Um, sorry to cut you off.
No, no, that's fine.
I just didn't want to forget. So ZBA, so Chair Kramer was our rep to the ZBA. Now, it doesn't have to be the chair.
No, it does not.
As a rep to the ZBA, but we, we need to appoint somebody, or you guys need to appoint somebody to the ZBA here. So however you want to do that.
I've done that before. I was on the zoning board of appeals in Wisconsin. There we are, a volunteer.
I was just gonna say, if there's anybody that wants to volunteer.
That's lovely. It's not the best place to be. No, it's not. It can be a very controversial place to be.
There, there is good leadership at the ZBA.
There is, yes, there is, yeah.
So can we get a, a motion?
Can we get a motion for that?
I'd be willing to make the motion to nominate.
Mark.
Mark.
Mark. Yeah. What he said. For the, for our chair, I mean, our.
ZBA.
ZBA rep.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Then moved by Ray Cocke, seconded by Commissioner Bliss. Uh, can I get a consensus vote? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Great.
Webster Road, whoops, October tenth planning meeting. Miles is going to a convention, right?
Yeah, can I talk to this one real quick?
Absolutely.
If that's okay. So yeah, we're, the annual Michigan Planners Association Conference is coming up, or in my industry, it's kind of like the big thing of the year. Um, I missed it last year because we just had too much going on in October, so I want to make sure if, if I could, I can make it this year. Uh, it's happening the week prior to this meeting, so originally I was of the mindset of speaking to everyone tonight, requesting to cancel. We did have a meeting canceled last month. We got a lot of ordinances in the works, but I thought I could make it all work. We got a couple of developments sprinkled in there that we're doing right now, but it turns out that I think I am creating a conflict with a couple ordinances and a development. So I, if it's cool with the planning commission, it just might be a ragtag packet, but I'd like to still make that meeting. But I guess at this point, I'd like to just give everyone a heads up that it might not be the breadth of the packet you're used to. If that's fine with everyone.
Go ahead, George.
Are you sure you need to do that?
Yeah, I don't want to hold up any, anything in the timeline, and I was looking forward at the holiday season. Obviously, we always cancel a couple. We're gonna lose a meeting in November, we're gonna lose a meeting in December. So, um, if, if it wasn't holding anything up, I feel comfortable, but I don't want to be the holdup, so.
Is this something we can do without you if you email us the information?
No, it's, it's fine. Our, what I'm gonna do is just, if it's fine with this body, I'm gonna keep it a very light packet, and it'll take me about an hour to put it together.
It's not that he's gonna miss the meeting per se.
I'll be at the meeting. I'll be here on the tent. It's the, we, it's making the packet that was the issue.
The packet that's the issue.
That's fine, I would think.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, even if you, if you wanted to put more things in, you could email it to us and we could go over it, and then at least we'd be prepared, you know?
Yeah, I think if I can keep it a light packet and it's just kind of a bare bones packet with everyone, so I might not have these divider pages that we're looking at right now, but yeah.
Yeah. I hear no objections to this. Is that correct? Okay.
Okay.
Let's move on to the Webster Road update. Is you doing this, Miles, or is George?
No, you, John, you asked this to be on the agenda, so if you want.
Oh, I just wanted to know if there was any changes to the Webster Road corridor project or?
Not South Webster Road. South Webster Road, kind of the north section of the trail, I think John was saying if, if we had any updates.
I think he's talking about the Webster.
Are you talking about the Webster Road project or are you talking about the, the property owned by the Drainage Commission?
There are two different things there.
When you say South Webster Road, I immediately think of the water control structure.
Yes, yes, and you've been in contact with Phil over this.
I have.
Thought the commissioners would appreciate an update.
Oh, okay, sure. Phil stated that, this was last week Monday, I believe, I talked with him. Phil is the drain commissioner, in case you didn't know. He stated that he was having a video conference with his legal team that would draft us the legalese, if you will, for the, to transfer ownership of the property to Bath Township. And he didn't foresee any, any technical difficulties with that. He just wanted to make sure that he had his precise verbiage in there for his easement on the, the berm itself, you know, the, the water control structure, which by law, the drain commission is required to maintain.
Right.
Which could use some maintenance right now.
Right.
I've talked to him about that as well.
Yeah, and I want to make sure that Bath Township does not have that liability for maintaining the berm.
Well, there's some trees already starting to grow in it just since 2015, so those should never have been allowed to even start, but it needs maintenance now.
Should have routine maintenance.
Yep.
And we're gonna have to pay late catch-up here at some point.
You know, if, if he, you know, if, if the drain commission would want to, I don't know, pay our DPW to do it, that's another thing, but we don't really have the equipment to do it, so. He's got a new, you know, hydraulic arm mower thing that they can, you know.
Road commission has.
Yes.
Yes.
They just purchased it, I believe, last year.
Yeah.
So that can be done, but it needs to be done, and I guess maybe we need to say something about that officially. I've asked him, you know, politely, but.
Yeah, I talked to the road commission about that.
And today, nothing's been, since last week, I mean, they're over my head, the weeds and everything over there.
I know. This is a problem with government is that various entities don't work well together.
Yeah, so I, you know, I think there should be a schedule, you know, it should be quarterly, that needs to be, you know, maintained. And I have brought it up to the superintendent to at least mow it, you know, our easement portions, and that, that hasn't happened either.
That's not our responsibility to mow his.
Correct, but it is, it is actually the non-motorized trail easement.
Only if, when we get it in writing.
Well, exactly. And we do, well, anyway, I, I'll stop right there.
Yeah, I think that's, that was where I was going.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we need to be cognizant of this because it's gonna come back to haunt us if we're not, not really careful about it.
If that berm goes, then we lose, we would definitely lose the lake and there are two subdivisions down the, down the way that might
Yes.
unfortunately find itself under six feet of water.
Yeah, and we've seen this happen in other Michigan communities. I don't think we want Bath to be on the record for that one.
All the planes, there.
Yeah.
Uh, we talked about the non-motorized transportation plan, or do we have anything more about that, Miles?
Um, yeah, so included in the packet are several pages for chapters one and two of that plan. If you guys have any feedback for this, please put it in the form of an email so I can forward it to the Williams and Works folks.
I, if I may.
Go ahead.
I can't remember her name.
The GIS one or?
The Williams and Works.
Tanya is our main guy.
That's it. She had asked me to, to email her some things and about the non-motorized trail.
Yeah.
And I went to their website and got her email address and sent it, and it came back as undeliverable.
Oh, I can get your contact.
Okay, if you would, yeah. Appreciate that. Yeah, just email it to me.
And so put Tanya's contact array.
George, did you have something you wanted?
Is there a specific, specific map that you'd like marked up?
Yeah, I mean, any, anything. I mean, they're looking for anything and everything from you guys, feedback wise, so they, they requested that I put this in this week's packet.
Do you have any, do you have any maps that are printed out that are bigger, legible, more legible than this or?
Yeah, if you want these printed larger, just come in the office tomorrow and I can print them on a ledger size.
What's the timeline on this? It's right away, isn't it?
They, yeah, they need, they have like four days to get some feedback from you guys to, for their next round of edits.
So if you have some map in here, we can come in and just mark it?
Yeah, mark it up. Yeah, just come in tomorrow if you got time, day after, whenever.
Okay.
Maybe call ahead and give me a little bit of notice because we're getting stacked up.
Thank you.
The chart two point three on page three is about the population breakdown by race.
Okay.
But it's labeled annual household income.
Yeah, that's what we need. That's the type of feedback we're looking for.
I noticed that. Good action.
I was like, I don't understand. I'm, I'm really struggling with this chart, and then it hit me. It's now that it's saying it.
Yeah. Good call.
Yeah, that's it. That's what we need.
I saw that and missed it.
When I do, I mean, I do enough writing too, and you guys catch stuff, that's just dumb mistakes. We all, we all do it, but that's why many set of eyes is the way to go.
I like the map, so, great job.
Yeah, they definitely have some good GIS people there.
Yeah, they do.
I was surprised at how many there were and how much information was on them.
I will say it's driving me crazy as a map person though. They're projecting, if you guys know anything about GIS, whenever you make a map, you're making a 3D surface, a flat surface. So depending on where you project it, it skews the map in some way, and so whenever we make our maps, they're perfect square because I'm projecting right over the township and they are clearly projecting from Grand Rapids. Because it's, it's angling out from Grand Rapids, so. That's my one critique of the maps. Other than that, the maps are great.
So I got an informational question, like the map, the community destinations, they, they pick all that stuff up? They, they got that information then?
No, oh, they've had heavy feedback. Almost all these maps are built from a number of layers we've provided.
Okay, that's what it is.
I mean, we've really done quite a bit of GIS work for these guys. We just give them the raw data and the raw layers and then they've been processing.
So there's a lot, there's quite a bit here that I didn't expect to be on there.
Yeah, yeah, and we worked with them on all that. And we, you know, I consulted Ben Zeeb because I'm like, Ben, what's, what's going on? I don't know where things are. He showed me most of those trails, if we can go to this one, like all these trails in Rose Lake, the DNR properties, I had no idea. This is just Ben's institutional local knowledge that produced all that, so big shout out to him.
Robinson Road is on there, and yeah.
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 Good.
And this is a really cool trail. If anyone doesn't know about these, please go check out this trail system, circle one here. It's a really good walk.
That's the Robinson Road.
Robinson Road, yeah.
Kind of disappointed they didn't put the present Park Lake Trail in there that's already there.
Yeah, it, it's talked about, but because it's not a maintained trail, the township feels it could be a liability because then we'd be in, like, we put Robson Road because we maintain it and if somebody snaps their leg, you know, it's not gonna be because there, we don't go out there and maintain it. We're the other one. We're like, what's our liability exposure or if we're?
I guess my argument would be if, if we're gonna use the liability card, we should put signs up and say, this is not a maintained trail and we accept no liability.
I think that's a fair argument, but we gotta get the board to fund some signs to be put up.
Well, that liability card is used way too much in municipalities, I think.
Can be abused, can't it?
Yeah.
Sure.
You're liable just for saying that.
Yeah, I'm liable for saying that. That's right.
Sure. Okay.
Anything else on that?
That's all I got on that. Just as much feedback as you guys are willing to provide, we'll, we'll all take.
Okay, we've already introduced Alexa.
Yep, Lexi, yep.
Yeah, let's move on to development updates.
Okay, um, I'll go to fetch GIS here. So I'll, I'll go to this real quick, just because it's, Bath Township was in the news again. I don't know if everybody caught it. This time we got in the news because there's been some concerns with the standards of villages here, and so I just want to bring it to everyone's attention that we are obviously aware of it. We had a meeting today about it, going over, you know, what the problem is as we see it, um, how we feel the problems being addressed by staff. We've reached out to the health department so they can work their angle of things because they have some authority over some of the issues there. We have some authority over the issues there in our building department. Fire has a little bit of some authority there, so we're on it. We're doing what we can. Letters are being sent out this week to the ownership of the facility. Um, we're not satisfied with what we're seeing. Our building inspector and myself have been out there multiple times in the last week assessing the problem and just kind of building our case here. Our Building Inspector and myself have been out there multiple times in the last week assessing the problem and just kinda building our case here. We're hoping to be able to work in good faith with this ownership as we do everybody else. Some of these out-of-state entities that manage these properties, though, can, um, be hard to nail down on getting them to comply.
So what are the issues, briefly?
Uh, briefly, uh, you know, there's, apartments are, uh, damp, they're not being dried out, that's producing mold, um, apartments. Uh, regular maintenance is a huge issue, which we don't have a ton of authority over, just regular. I was supposed to be provided a bed, my bed wasn't provided, my neighbor has blinds, I don't have blinds. Now, safety is an issue, because hallways are unlit, doors are being left open, or doors are being locked and keys are being provided, and the keys don't work. So, some of that, facilities locked and unlocked, that's within the building code, we can handle that, we're working towards that. They use a key card system there instead of, uh, deadbolt locks. Unfortunately, when those key cards don't work, they don't have an in-house solution to that, so people are ready to move in with their parents on move-in day. They can't get in, they're calling Kevin, the Fire Department's out there, basically like, helping people break in, so they can move in, with the apartment's approval, of course, but now it's a pull on our resources, because their inability to operate. And then the, now it's unlocked for days on end until they get somebody out there. So it's just, it's just management. Um, we went out and looked at an apartment today, the stove was unhooked, because they were doing some wiring with the stove, the wiring wasn't done properly, so we're gonna be citing them for that wiring. The stove's been unhooked for three weeks now, so they haven't been able to use their stove, the dishwasher was unhooked, the area that fed into the dishwasher was leaking, so there's water damage. And, uh, the, uh, the apartment wasn't secured either, and they're missing a door for one of the rooms. So, these are big fundamental issues. Uh, this company had, you know, has a one-star rating for all of the facilities they manage, not just in Michigan, but in the US, so. We're on it, basically, we know it's an issue, this has been an impetus, I know we've come to the board in the past, me and Kevin, with a rental ordinance, that was more Airbnb-based, we're now reviewing, uh, coming back to the board with an ordinance that's more apartment rental-based, not creating some type of registry and inventory system, but giving us more tools in our toolbox for enforcement. 'Cause right now, Bath Township's light on rental enforcement, that's 'cause it hasn't been a huge issue, we don't have a, a huge amount of rentals, we're nowhere near where East Lansing is, but East Lansing has way more tools in their toolbox. It's like the Landings is in East Lansing, they can cite them for all kinds of things, we don't have that ability here as of right now. So that we're being hamstrung a little bit. So me and Kevin will be going to the board soon to ask, uh, if we can buffer that out a little bit. So that's one development thing, other than that, uh, Saginaw Corridor is coming along nicely, Big B Coffee got C of O the other day. Um, so we're projecting, they've hydro seeded now, some grass is growing in, so it looks a little messy over there, but within two weeks, that grass should be growing in pretty nicely, all the planting was, uh, done in accordance with their landscaping plan. Hopefully be open by the end of the month. Um, Dunkin' Donuts is moving along nicely, uh, again, hopefully they'll be open by December-ish time period. Uh, Berry's Bagels, even though they got the signage out there, and everyone's very hyped up about Berry's Bagels, including me, 'cause there's nowhere to get lunch, um, they are moving slower, so their, their permitting process is just not going very quickly. Um, so I wouldn't say they're gonna be ready before the end of this year. Um, Sunrise Forest, overall, this site is coming together well, there are a couple issues came up recently around drainage, we spoke in with staff, and they're addressing, addressing it, East Lansing storage coming along nicely, um, all their downspouts are, uh, installed. Um, they're capturing more water than they ever had before, uh, it's been drier on that site than it has been in the past. They're not, no water flow is going to neighboring properties, so that's obviously what we care about the most. Um, we'll see how it performs in the spring, that's gonna be their big test. 'Cause, uh, Bath Township's a wet place, and spring rain could really be crazy here. Um, Ace Hardware, I mean, you guys talked tomorrow and group tonight, they're moving around at breakneck pace, uh, as lo- as well as the Surgical Center, I mean, they've really impressed us all on how quickly those have gone up.
Yeah, they got their act together.
Um, HDI, we expect them to come in at some point for this parcel here, they've got two homes going up right now on their last two available lots. So, over, I, I would imagine that they're gonna do their planning over the winter with the Planning Commission, that way they can break ground in the spring. So we'll see what happens there. So that, that's developments in a nutshell. Last thing, if I didn't mention it already, uh, the lender pulled out because of current lending conditions being set by the Federal Reserve, interest rates are super high, banks are super anxious about all these commercial loans on their books, commercial properties aren't doing that well right now, um, and being viewed as a, more of a liability than asset at this point by, uh, holding companies. So their lenders, uh, paused this project until, um, conditions approve.
For the notice.
Yeah.
So we have, the, the grass looks really nice there.
Yeah, so maybe that issue about worrying about the frontage there might not be a non-issue.
Good question.
Yeah.
The HDI project, I can't remember what their original, um.
They're looking about fifty-four homes.
And the original PUD?
Originally it was seventy, but requirements have gone up over time for common space, so they're gonna have to draw that number down.
And that's the one directly behind McDonald's?
Yeah.
They also had a bunch of, uh, stuff they had to meet, as far as the road went, uh, Perry Road, so I don't know if you wanna look, look at that, just to make sure that we got that covered. They had a bunch of, they had a bunch of conditions.
Or here, sorry.
Yeah, I think they were corrected.
Okay.
But just before we get into it next year.
I think their biggest hassle is gonna be, they have a common use with this draw, these are retention ponds here, not detention ponds, and they drain into Lake Lansing, which means that this whole project and this whole approval will be subject to Ingham County's, um, Drain Commission. So, multi-county Drain Commission's working with each other, big, big project holdup there. So I think that's, they would've been in before now, but they're working through that.
I, I thought they just had some, uh, original conditions for the Perry Road.
I, I believe they do have some of those, so that'll get evaluated during the time.
Question?
Go ahead.
Um, when we had that, uh, now until 2050 tri-county planning thing.
Oh, yes.
Um, you and the assessor mentioned a development.
And John, uh, uh, Chair Reich would talk to me about this afternoon too, like, well, I didn't know about half of that. They asked us to speculate wildly about what could happen.
Who's they?
The tri-county planners. So we, what, the things me and Beth were saying, we were talking about this parcel, we were talking about these larger parcels up here.
Oh, yeah.
We were speculating wildly.
No, and you made a specific comment about one, uh, Ides, behind the pines, uh, which is south of the lake.
Oh, yes, that, Beth is privy to some knowledge from them, I have not heard anything about that, that, right here, the Ides have,
Correct.
Apparently, there's some, the rumor mill, and we know how the rumor mill is, but the rumor mill is that there is some intention to, where they have this connection here, build a public road up into here and do something, it's quite wet back there.
It's, it's wetland.
So I don't know how real that is. Now, you can engineer your way out of many things in this world, but
Yes.
to every, the more engineering you do, the less viable the project becomes.
Well, I don't know how, how they would get, that, in the past, and this was hearsay, but in the past, I was always told that the Ides had used that as what was called setback property for the DNR, whereas you, you fill in one wetland and you have to set aside other, other land that you can never.
Oh, that could be the case.
So, that, that was always what that was, and, and if you go up just a little bit, Miles, yeah, see that? See that almost sandy-looking area?
Yes.
That actually used to be a lake.
Yeah, you can see how exactly wet, and I'm sure in the springtime, there's just feet of standing water there.
Yeah, well, and it's, it's a good ten feet by the contours, it's a good ten feet below the lake level. So that would be, and if you see that, you see the motor, the non-motorized path up there in the upper left-hand, or upper right-hand corner? That's, that's the berm, if that berm ever broke, that would literally empty the lake.
Yeah.
Into that lowland, 'cause it's quite high, there used to be a culvert through there.
I'm sure they, you, no amount of engineering's gonna fix this, this would be like trying to build in that bog next to Somerset, no one's gonna do that, they would have to stay here in the south.
But they did ask you to speculate on.
They asked us to speculate wildly, yeah.
Up to twenty fifty.
Up to twenty fifty, which, yeah.
We were all speculating, John wasn't there.
Yeah.
They wanted to know max case scenario for build-out in this area, so we gave them max case scenario.
And a lot of that would be dependent on sewer capacity.
Sewer, yeah, and they, they were like.
Much so.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's developments.
Okay, anything else? We've got us, time for additional public comments. Anybody would like to make any additional public comments?
I've been sitting too long, gentlemen.
I know, I'm tasting mine.
Yes, Joan Matson again, I just love figures, and I love your data, and I looked at that a little differently. I, uh, looked at it and said, well, who are these bars? And I put together your first two bars and said, oh, these are all the kids in school, or preschool, or just born, up age nineteen. Now, that's not perfect, because some seventeen and nineteen-year-olds are not gonna finish and are in the working field, but that makes twenty-seven hundred about people who are not, uh, income, uh, providers. The next one is the big one, and we all know that's MSU students who are renters, and they're, they're transients with their, uh, probably lack of tax base for the rental.
What, and you might know about this, but just one note on trying to capture census data as it relates to students, and myself included, when I was in undergrad and graduate school, my home of record was in Fenton, Michigan, so whenever the census was performed, I counted in their data, not in Detroit's data.
Yeah, this is residential here in, in our city, so this, I, I assume this census data is all in issue.
Yeah, but it probably doesn't capture most of the students, 'cause they don't, yeah, they don't, their home of, uh, record is not Bath Township, it's wherever they're from.
Uh, the next one I didn't know what to do with, because it's kind of transi-, uh, transitional from the thirty to thirty-nine-year-olds. They're either young people trying to find their first place, or they're grad students who haven't left school yet. So I would've divided them in half and split it them over to the MSU or to the next one. The next two, from forty to forty-nine and fifty to fifty-nine, I put together, because those are your, your homeowners. Those are your, a core, uh, base of people.
Sure.
Add those two together, and that's about, uh, five thousand. And that's a big, big number, and then I put the seventy to seventy-nine and the rest of my octogenarian together, since we're such a small group, for about a thousand, maybe a thousand fifty retirees who love the area. Uh, what that does is make me see that the homeowners are outdoing the MSU students. I like to look at that, I like to see the, the, the data more like, uh, impact on the community financially and, uh, growth-wise, so. I just thought I'd tell you what I did, because I like looking at it that way.
If you ever wanna email me any feedback to provide to Williams and Works, we're, they're always open to public feedback as well.
Yep.
Okay, well, this, I, I thought this was nice and optimistic.
Great.
Except for the MSU students, don't build any more apartments, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? Minister Bliss, you're up.
Thank you, uh, happy to give a Township Board update. Uh, perhaps the most important piece to this group is that we appointed Mark onto the Planning Commission, so welcome to the team. Uh, happily unanimous on the, the board, so happy to have him on board. Uh, we have the fiscal year twenty-four budget recommendation from staff released, that's accessible online, you can also get copies here from staff if you're interested in seeing it, that includes planning budgets, mild budgets, the budgets that we have, uh, a touch and effect on. We discussed as part of that release the budgeting process. At this point, our plan is to hold special meetings for an hour prior to each normal meeting, regular set meeting, for now until the budget is done, so six or seven perhaps additional meetings to work through the budget, page by page, step by step, to answer questions and, uh, provide feedback. So you all certainly, as is the public, is invited to come and, uh, participate in those meetings, uh, during public comment, but also to, to hear, uh, what we're discussing, again, from five to six on board meeting days.
Those are not meetings at the whole, correct?
No. Uh, we received a list of the ARPA proposals. If you recall, I think we were the first committee to send a list of ARPA thoughts to the board. I think we set off a good, uh, idea for the rest of the committees to provide some thoughts to, so all of those have come into the administration. While we didn't see yet the full proposals, we got a list of all of the ideas that were presented. There's a ton, I think a lot of them are really great, not enough money to fund all of them, uh, as you can expect, but if you're interested in that list, it's in the board packet, and I can also share it with anybody who's interested. We will then, uh, look at the full proposals and start to wrestle with what that should look like as part of the budget process. ARPA funds need to be designated by fiscal year twenty-four, uh, so now is the time to do that. It's also the budget time, so those things actually go hand in hand, I think, really smartly, so we will be doing that as well. A couple of housekeeping things, we paid the taxes on the DDA property downtown since of the dissolution of the DDA. We spent a lot of time, what I'm providing to you is two meetings worth of activity. Uh, and while there's, has not been a lot of action taken, we spent a lot of time talking about reimbursing legal expenses, office locations, and Township Board roles, uh, that had some formal actions, and some didn't have formal actions, so, uh, you can see that from the board meeting minutes. Uh, lastly, that does touch us, the capital improvement plan has not yet been received by the board. Uh, the supervisor indicated she had some concerns and has pushed that back a bit, I understand that to be on our.
Supervisor?
Yes.
Superintendent?
No, the supervisor. Uh, so I anticipate that to be on our next agenda for acceptance. Uh, you know, that's our document to create, to send to the board, and the board to decide to take or not take, but sort of legally, we need the board to take it. So, uh, I anticipate that that will move through, but if you're interested to hear some of, uh, the concerns or thoughts about how to do this better, uh, I would encourage you to talk to the supervisor or come to that meeting and, and hear the comments in real time. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, this is the time for trustee and Planning Commissioner comments. Mr. Severie.
Hello?
We're having.
Nope.
Mark?
I'm just happy to be here.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Cockey?
Welcome, Mark. Welcome, Lexi.
Mr. Bliss?
I'm upset I did not get the denim shirt memo. Next time you guys are gonna dress alike, we don't wanna be included in that. No other comments. Thanks.
Mr. Baker?
Per usual, I'd like to thank those behind the scenes, uh, especially Miles, all this hard work that he does every day, days late, I'm sure. And, uh, I'm greatly appreciative of how in-depth these packets are, the map, the maps, and everything how well it's put together, and the accessibility of the Planning Department, I'm very thankful for that. Also echo, uh, welcoming Mark and Lexi.
Great, I appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen, can I get a consensus vote to adjourn? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned, it's.
That's a way to do it.
Eight, seven fifty.
So you would just say, like, for that sound, say, uh, the meeting was adjourned, no objections?
George, I, uh, reached out to.